Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special called going work session with the planning commission and William. Um. Chris.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Garber.
Yeah.
Mr. Moran.
Yeah.
Chairman Hodge.
Here. Hmm, who you okay?
Me. You tell it what we're listening and supposed to be talking to. The hell.
This fellow.
Yeah.
On this side. Here, Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mrs. Slitter.
Here, Chairman Greenwood.
Here. But Mr. Chair is, did this, I'm doing? Yeah, yeah, I'm sure no one's gonna hear us.
When our these pick up.
And we're deep sound.
Okay.
I didn't see the line.
It'll, it'll be on you motion.
I thought, I thought it was water.
That I go to. Uh. Ladies and gentlemen, have you reviewed? And on meeting agenda, and if so, would you have any candidates or?
I'll maybe adopt it as presented, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Muskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodge.
Hi.
Did you know a lot of?
Hi. Mr. Williams.
Uh.
Slitter.
Hi.
Mr. Powell.
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood.
Hi.
Well, yeah, and I guess at this point, sure, you go forward.
Okay, so, we're gonna go over the purpose, can you just do the ordinance? This is something that the planning commission has been working on for maybe eight or nine months, um, often one. Um, so we have multiple changes, um. Just trying to get the ordinance clarified mainly, um. In the memo, it kind of goes over the purpose. Um, the background, which is through. Um, and then some future reviews that, um, we want to work at coming up in phase two and phase three. But right now, we're gonna just go into the proposed subdivision and, and any ordinance changes, um, for tonight. And under eighty-six, one-ten, they've got the minimum site area. A divisional regulation for primaries and distance. And down at the bottom of the table, we've got the minimum lot area for the family subdivision. Shall be three acres, but to just make it clarified, we're not to add the parent parcel, because everyone's gonna buy the acres.
And I guess my question on that would be, why'd you pick, why would it be three acres, because you can't divide that, but? What? One time?
Well, under the family division, we had previously had approved that a, a family division could be reduced to three acres. Um, so that had already been previously done, um, some time back. But that would, the, the parent parcel still needs to be remaining five acres, which is the minimum lot size in the AC. But, under the family division, they could give to any immediate family member a three acre parcel.
So what this says is, the parent parcel needs to be eight acres, so when you take three off, you still have five.
In order to divide it into a family division.
And. When you just said the parent parcel with five acres, it looks like you're trying to take a five acre spot and take three off of it.
No.
So the, the parcel to be, it should clarify that. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It could be.
Clarify, we need to go a little bit farther and say that, yeah. The parent parcel shall begin by being no less than eight acres, and the resulting's division will, will, it will not result in being less than five.
With a pay.
Right.
And that's in the AC with the five acre minimum, or we're not allowing family divisions? In RR or any of the other districts?
But that's something that was briefly discussed before the meeting. Um, they do allow for divisions under a major divi- major subdivision. However, you have to go through as an amendment to the subdivisional items.
That's pretty much what I was asking.
Now, I mean, if that's something that we wanna look at, we can certainly, um, change it for AC, RR, and R1. And, and put it in the matrix to be permitted by one.
Well, I just brought it up because I have, have a friend who wanted to do that, and it was in a major subdivision. And they thought it was, they're gonna be talking about. And they got a piece that big, and that particular subdivision worked on. I don't. I would be open to it.
Is that something that you want me to add?
So we would take them, a major subdivision, and let them start splitting lots in the subdivision after.
Family subdivision, someone who. Who might be interested in, in, you know, have, uh, a disabled, you know, current, uh, child or something, and I know that we have the, the other thing that you can build up to. Or an accessory.
But that's just in the AC, correct?
Yes.
Well, being it to all, I'm gonna cover everything.
We've got a lot of, lot of area that is not in the AC, that people maybe want to do a family division or build a eight hundred square foot or less cottage on, and currently, we don't have anything in there that addresses that.
But. When you're talking about a major subdivision and going in, we cutting something that was always planned to design. The neighborhood bought into being what you put, add on paper. Now, you could go years later and change a neighborhood that's already established.
That's true somewhat, because you make a subdivision, say, well, a homeowners association with all the criteria, the ins and outs of what you can and can't do.
Major subdivisions have acres available to split, many of them. How many major subdivisions?
It's huge, it's huge, like I said, this particular one, I don't know how they ended up with a lot that would, that would have qualified.
Right.
But, um.
Especially the ones that have, uh, a house that's been out a long time, and subdivision around it. I think Amaral Hill has a, a horse farm right there, I don't know what acreage is on that, but I'm sure.
It's like, that's probably fifteen to twenty acres like that.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming that's from that.
Because. Or originally. When they started that subdivision.
How would the acreage have cut out a lot of that, so if you're saying, so the subdivision, they wouldn't be able to do it, because none, not many of the parcels in a major subdivision would be eight acres, except like, that may be.
Well, they're all few subdivisions, in some of the back lots, they left some big lots. Because they didn't wanna have to go through the changes the county had to add the water system to the back lot, the big lots. They had their own wells on them. And, you know, if you got to a certain number of houses, you had to survive, have water sewer. And I know that was a big issue years ago, and that's how they got some of the big lots.
Almost all of your major subdivisions gonna have covenants and restrictions that say no further development.
And I was, I was gonna ask, this can't override that.
No.
That's.
No, because as, as someone said, when the people bought into that subdivision, unless they went through the entire subdivision, got every one in there to sign off to redo it, that's the only way to redo covenants and restrictions. And they run into this once or twice throughout the whole county, so. I think the bigger picture is the RR allows for three acre lots. So if someone owned six acres in the RR, the, the parent tract would still meet the county minimum, which is three acres, so in that situation, you would be able to cut a six acre lot and cut three acre lot off.
And so we shouldn't change it to the parent parcel, so it'd be no less than eight acres, because then it was, that's just in the AC, it should be no.
That's, that's two different zoning districts.
We would have to make it according to.
Right.
It'd have to meet the minimum acreage for that zoning.
Really, that's true. Does that make it confusing, let me put this thing underneath, unless. Well, you're, you're growing the, well, you're just adding more, uh. Explanted over language under the chart, but that's, that's fine, this is not really about how many sentences we have in there, but about the policy we wanna do, right?
My clarification.
Well, I thought, most of this started way back, because of people buying, doing family divides instead of subdivision, minor subdivisions. And then waiting and selling it out and.
Well, that's when King William implemented the eight acres, it, it used to be no holding period at all, and you could buy a piece of land and family divide it immediately. And it was done four or five times. And King William followed other counties, and they implemented, it's a maximum of fifteen years is, is the maximum you can do. We put in eight years, where you have to have owned it five, and the recipient has to keep it three before they can sell it. So that really, I think this ran, we've talked about this before, that, that pretty much stopped people from using that ordinance. I mean, I don't know of anyone who's, I mean, since that eight years has been and used it to circumvent the ordinance.
I only know one, one time, and that had been done years ago, and, um, shortly after I came here, they had held one through all the lot, and sold them. But that's only been done time.
We're going to add AC and RR in the process. So, paragraph number two, saying for the RR, the minimum lot should be three, but the parent parcel should be no less than six?
And I'm just, I, I can see you running into that, because we have a large portion of the county that falls within that RR.
And like I said, if it can't fall into subdivision, because they have to follow the other rules, so they would have to meet all the requirements before they'd be able to do it.
Well, it doesn't sound like it would be something that would be abused.
Right. You think it would? I don't think so, but. Doesn't seem.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking of past abuse, that somebody always working, looking for a way to get a lot.
Well. It'd always be, it'd always be mindful of the change to, if somebody found a loophole.
Right.
And this is just family division, not just.
Yeah, we explicitly state what comes to, uh, a relative.
That's in our.
We have a holding period for it.
Mm-hmm.
There's limited number of lots, there's without even a plot to. I would rather give a little bit more freedom to somebody who has a piece of land to do with it, what they want, maybe you pass something on to another generation of the family, you know, I, I'd rather see something that addresses that. It's not, and, um.
A lot of families are having hardships even now, even though it's kind of getting a little better, but still, this would help some of them out, yeah.
Affordable housing is hard, hard to come by. Notwithstanding, it, property costs as well.
Has this affected much dealing with, um, wells and sewer?
Maybe they just, they could still have to get approval in the health department, depending on something, well, but three acres, they should easily be able to do it.
You still have to have a second.
Either that or the agreement to where they can, if you use both, where we were gonna see that on, on its own individual parcel.
I think you're talking about primary and reserve.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of, I thought for those, I wanted to, yeah, tell you.
Yeah, two different things, you have to have a primary and reserve through the health department. But you can, if it's two family members, can have an easement agreement, where they could share septic or share well if they wanted to. If it was big enough to handle both dwellings. Say if I wanted to put a three bedroom and a two bedroom, I could put in a five bedroom grain field.
All being shared.
And shared.
I can see problems with that, with what I'm saying.
Yeah, I've seen them have problems with shannin' the well, when it's sold off, and the guy goes, wait a minute, your water meter is on me. Or electric coming off me for your water.
How many houses can share a same one? I know.
That depends on the size of the well, I mean, you've got a whole neighborhood seeming to count it, that share one well.
This one right in front of me, that's.
Then our, then our high share.
They just put the well in it.
Then our houses, probably fifty or sixty houses on one well. But your, your standard four inch deep well will easily supply two or three houses.
It's a something we want to go ahead and put in lodges.
This is just me, I think it worked well.
Yeah, I think it sounds like.
Everybody in agreement with that?
It's getting. We always can change it every month. Yeah, right.
Parent parcel would have to be minimum.
Eight acres for eight, and six acre for RR.
Okay, well, that's changing, right?
Yeah. You would add that like number two, and then they're fixing the person's, the parent parcel, which I don't know, eight, and then add a two. They'll, oh, and also specify that's for AC, and then put one for RR, sounds good, okay.
So the next thing that we have.
Chairman, Chairman, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm impressed with your. We're understanding that they can't hear you. I mean, uh, even in this room. Questioning, I'm not really good at that. I know it's not easy, we can get, speak a little bit of, um. Uh, your, your voice, the flings, uh, sound out as, as much as you can without obviously yelling, because, uh, this is an important meeting, and I think everybody wants to, wants to hear what's in.
Speak into the owl.
Is the owl picking up, going on this end?
Can you hear it?
People wouldn't hear that, can't hear.
Oh. Oh, that's right.
We don't have the speaker doing.
Don't have nothing.
Okay, so, next section is eighty-six dash one-one-three, guards and open space generally. Um, so what we were gonna do is, under C, add terraces, steps, chimneys, open, uninterested spaces, platforms, or paved terraces not covered by roof or canopy, and which do not extend above the level of the first floor of the building. May extend or project into a required front side or rear yard setback, not more than six feet. Provided that no such production may be closer than thirty feet to the front property line, and ten feet to any side of rear property line. And then add D, mechanical equipment may project into a required. Provided that they are located no closer than three feet to any side or rear property line. This will give people the opportunity to put like a, a like, a larger landing, that type of thing, that they would ordinarily not be able to do without going through the variance procedure.
So does this deal with your small square footage of lots? Because I know y'all were mentioning a while back, a magnet. The forty thousand square feet instead of thirty thousand.
This would be for any house that needs the minimum size, or setback, or doesn't even need the setback. But still gives them that option to put, um, a porch that's not covered, or, um, not enclosed, or anything.
That's smaller lot, are you talking, so you're talking about, if somebody's got a five acre lot, and they built too close to the light away, now you go let them extend forward, it's what you're saying?
It's not really gonna pertain too much for your larger lots, but your older homes that are built on one acre lots, and we have that all over the county, um. Being that, that they've been there for a long time, or for one reason or another, they do not meet the, the current setback of fifty or seventy-five feet. But they would like to put a, you know, an open porch to sit out on, or instead of having a minimum of a three by three landing at the door, make it just a little bit larger.
I don't know, this, this, because, I mean, right now, they could go for a variance.
They could go for variance.
And that, I mean, this just seems kind of tailor made for the variance process, you know, this is very much to me, seems like it's a case by case basis issue. That we would be, sure, we would be, in, in liberalizing a little bit, we would have some people that would be very happy with that, and maybe that wouldn't cause a problem, but then I think down the line, we've run into some people who didn't like that there was a even uncovered porch encroaching any further upon the property line, when we had these setbacks in the ordinance. So to, to me, with it being already handled by the variance process, I think maybe this issue is best, where that's best handled.
Does. Planning and zoning, is it such a thing as an in-house variance? I know metal sites, I had, uh, I needed one, and they could do, in the property line setback, they could do an in-house with them. Twenty-five feet, anything open and above, you have to go to the board as well, it's on it, so we don't have any, anything like that at all.
We do not.
Do many counties have that, or?
Um, there are some.
Oh, was it, oh, so we, that was probably ten years ago?
There, there are some, but not too many.
Really, how often does this situation come up?
Uh, it doesn't come up very often. I think because of the, the fee that people have to pay. Uh, you know, it's fifteen hundred dollars per variance process. That, a lot of people that are gonna put a small deck or something on, well, by the time they pay the fifteen hundred, that's the materials right there. So, so they don't go and do it.
Where you run into it the most is in a wheelchair ramp. If someone wants to add a permanent wheelchair ramp off the front of their house, and their foundation is thirty inches tall, it takes you thirty feet to achieve the one inch of fall to meet the county code, right?
There you go.
So you'd have to have a ramp thirty foot, if you didn't have it. So I've seen, and we've run into that more than anything, but I, I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Muskowski, if somebody wants to do something other than that, it seems to be a, a, um. Which you just.
For the zoning appeals.
Yeah, designing.
And I will tell you, if somebody needs a handicap ramp, we're not gonna deny them that handicap ramp.
Well, I think that's what, Mr. Garber, if you had something in there that would allow you that flexibility for, for those items like that, just to say, we're gonna allow this. Anything else would go to the BZA, if you were asking for something. If that was a, for want and not a necessity.
Could something like that be, we could allow planning and zoning to make that decision without going through the steps, if, if you had the the authority to do that variance for that?
We could subvert the general and, and take this out of your life.
A handicap lamp?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that would eliminate some of the work and delay them.
And the cost, because if, if they're putting in a, a wheelchair ramp, probably an elderly person throwing a fixed income. That, that could be three months of income.
It should be expedited.
Yeah, but also, that's, it's very, very expensive.
But then also, most of the handicap lamps, they ramp them to one side of the, to the driveway to make it more accessible, instead of straight out, unless it was in a subdivision, that straight out hit the curb.
Which is rare.
Well, something, yeah.
I will take that out and, and make, um, some changes to that, to do an administrative waiver. Or.
Is there a need for appeal language?
Well, if we deny something, they always have the right to appeal it, so.
But, but, but.
We could. Take the appeal.
If they use a metal ramp, it still comes down to the same setback.
The temporary structure, maybe not.
And temporary, and the lamps that they put in and take out, that, that should be handled in-house, if any.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they only stay there until it costs a person the bad health, they.
So are we in agreement to strike NC and D?
So the next thing is section eighty-six, one thirty-six point two, under boundaries. Um, and this is when we're actually going to override this first. Um. And this is trying to verify where the measurements, that's gonna be. And we also, um, instead of it being seven hundred and fifty-three on three sixty, we reduce it to seven hundred feet. Um, so, on number one, properties with frontage on US Highway three sixty, for its entirety through the county and extending, um, we changed to the seven hundred feet instead of seven hundred and fifty feet. On either side from the center line of such highway, or through the debt of the property, whichever is less. And then we added number three, the center line shall be measured from the line on the outer edge of the lane. If there is a question, the director of planning will make the final determination.
I'll, I think I was listening to the other thing, one of the discussions, the. So, when we're talking about seven hundred feet, say you're going east on three sixty, would that be seven hundred feet from the last eastbound lane, or, or this? I know they did totally, I can say that.
All right, I got a question on what you're saying right there. After doing some checking, I was told that three sixty isn't a hundred and fifty foot wide, right away, it's wider than that. So when we go moving to the outside lane, just knocking off fifty foot, doesn't come back to the conversation of where they already were.
Why is it not, why is it not the center line on the right way? Maybe it's a reason for that? I know y'all were, I, I was listening, and I just couldn't, I couldn't get a hold of it.
It's variable widths throughout the county, it's not the same width right away, so where it changes different widths, you could effectively have stuff like that, because of the variable widths.
But three sixty isn't a variable width, is it?
It is in spots, I believe.
See, that's what I kept going off people different.
Yeah, because every, every time, like in the commercial area, when something is subdivided, there has to be a dedication to VDOT. So that increases that width, when you do a dedication to VDOT. And VDOT requires that to sign off on a plaque.
Well. If you got anybody that's into engineering and doing, they had no problem finding the center line. And I know you do your cer- you can do your surveys, where they do the satellite surveys. And I've watched the county bring up spots on that satellites up. You should be able to go through sixty and show that line through all the, the whole route of three sixty. But establishing it for the developer, whoever. I feel like we ought to be able to draw a map and put a line through there and say, this is the line.
But right now, we do use the GIS to determine.
If you use the GIS from dead center of the road, I don't see a problem with that. Because that, all the different dedications don't change, jumping back and forth on somebody's property.
You're saying the dead center of the four lanes.
That dead center of the four lanes is what, where the words began in the beginning, I don't see why we should.
That's what I was thinking when I was listening to the.
And I, I mean, I'd originally said that, you and I'd originally said that, there was some discussion about turning lanes and stuff like that.
It kept someone curves in it.
But if you take the dead center of the four lanes and just draw a line right through the intersection, the line is the line.
That's what I.
Whether it's three lanes, because of a turning lane, or, or that was there, the setback on the person's property doesn't change.
And the variable widths don't matter at that point.
If they've dedicated an extra twenty-five or thirty foot, that's seven hundred and fifty foot, still the same thing.
And that line will be used not only to measure the TCO, but the setbacks.
Well, then we gotta establish a setback off of that same.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we're gonna use that line, that line has got to be the same line for the building setback off of. As well as the T, we're talking about two different things, the TCO is seven hundred feet, but the buildings don't have to, do not have to be that far back. So if you're gonna measure from the center of those four lanes, we need to make sure as setbacks, put the buildings back where we want them.
And safe, let's be safe.
Which, what, what is it now, what is it? Which what what is it now, where is it now and where do we measure from now, let's say the Bojangles, what what?
We would measure from the front property line. Which is gonna be, you know, wherever that seven hundred feet stops. It's wherever their property line is.
So three in the uh, three sixty corridor, the front property line, that's over seven hundred feet.
But that's from their property line.
From their property.
And that property line is the outside of that hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty foot right away.
It not not necessarily, that could also vary.
So that property line is inside of the V dot right away?
No, it's not gonna be in the V dot right away, but it's gonna vary. It could, it's gonna be that further off the road sometime. And then.
Why was it one of the three?
It's wherever their property line is, and then, of course, like Mr. Cullen said. A lot of, especially with your commercial. But not just commercial, if you were to do a development of any kind. V dot does have a certain portion that they want dedicated.
And then your property line moves behind that dedicated spot.
You basically give them your land.
Oh.
Dedicate your land to.
That would probably be because for the turn lane or or something like.
Future riding of the highway and they they require dedication on sidewalks, secondary roads and everything.
Oh, good. So how do we come up with a standard, it works bad to the developers, so they know what we asking for?
Well, this is just saying what area of the property is gonna be in the transportation border overlay district. This isn't.
That isn't the next problem.
Yep, this isn't, as far as setbacks go, this is. Where does that T C O start and end? Um, and it was, some people were having trouble understanding where to get the measurement from, which is what brought this up. Trying to to get it more clear to them as to where to get their measurement. So we came up with several different options. And at our last meeting, this was the best option to come up with to make it clear.
In my, the center of the highway, it would be different. For uniform than me.
You know, right?
Well, for for strictly the T C O, which I think Sherry's trying to keep us on point with, not building setbacks. I mean, it's seven hundred feet, I mean. Twenty five or fifty feet either way, you still have to adhere to the T C O. If I, if I'm at seven hundred and the neighbor, you know, is at six seventy five, it's really. No one's really gonna build that far off the road in typically.
Not for commercial, they want to get its place in the roads, I think that.
So I would say, yeah, the center of the four lines. For the T C O management.
So let me introduce. Look here, if the boundary is clearly depicted on the flat concept line or site plan is appropriate and shall be determined by an engineer or steward. What I would place in there perhaps?
But you're saying that's will be put on the site plan. But the county should have it. In our. Documentation of, you know, whatever map we have of the area. So we can show them, you know, if a developer walked in and said, I wanna buy this fifty acre piece on three sixty. Where does the T C O cut this piece of property? If we've got it in your. G I S system. Where it shows the center line of the road where seven hundred fifty foot cuts every property on three sixty. When that person walked in, you could pull that up, okay?
Well, we can do a measurement on G I S. It is not one hundred percent accurate. But it's a good tool to get an idea of where that seven hundred or seven fifty line is gonna be.
They're giving rough estimates.
Yeah, they give my estimate close enough to.
Yes.
When somebody does a site plan. That that may or may not be on, would it be the T C O automatically, is what we need to specify the. That needs to be on on the site form.
What what a survey is gonna ask you is, you have to tell them where they measure from. Is it the edge of the easement or is it?
Oh, yeah, we have, yes, we we, I think we've already agreed that it's gonna be the center of uh. The right away.
So if they come in, they will, everyone, the standard will be to measure from the center of the four lanes. Back seven hundred feet, and yes, you can ask the survey to show that on their site plan to show where the building fits within that.
And that is usually not an issue, like we have just said. They wanna build close to the road. Where it may uh be an an issue is. In the back of their property where they want to do um a storage building or something. And that may be out of the T C O.
Isn't it some language in there that says if the piece of property fronts on three sixty period? It has to adhere to the T C O?
If it's in the T C O, yeah, and then they still have to do, you know, their landscape buffer, they have to give twenty five feet for that, they have to give an additional ten foot.
So even even if that piece of property is eight hundred foot deep, but it fronts on three sixty and they wanted to go to seven oh one. And build a hole on or something, they still have to adhere to the T C O because that piece of property fronts on three sixty.
Mm-hmm. This is whichever is less, which is either the seven hundred, the seven hundred feet or the. Or the um depth of the property.
So then you run into like Sherry's saying, somebody's. They wanted to go past the seven hundred foot mark, they can build what they want without having to adhere to the T C O.
But that's rare that that's gonna happen.
Agreed.
So we get that change?
And they're gonna follow the same thing out there as well?
The same thirty.
If there's a middle turn lane, it would be in the middle of those three lanes, correct?
This would be the center, which you're only gonna have that up at central garage anyway. Um, and on eighty six dash one thirty six. Under um number C at the bottom. Uh, we did add regulations of the T C O district shall apply to all commercial sites developed. Redeveloped or expanded after the establishment of the district. This district shall not apply to single residential sites. Or those sites developed prior to its establishment. So we added commercial and then we added shall not apply to single residential sites. Somebody that has an individual lot, um, that is zone residential. Then they get, you know. They wouldn't have to meet all the criteria that your commercial site needs.
All right, so if a commercial site. Wants to change something on its commercial site. Does it need to meet to the T C O at that point?
That's what I was raised.
Yeah.
So it depends, there is um exceptions, whether it's twelve hundred square feet. They can do a one-time addition.
Well, it, it only goes to adding buildings. Expanding your parking lot, changing stuff on your site, the only thing that changes if you're doing structure.
Well.
That's what I'm trying to find, the definition.
If if you have a building that predates the T C O.
And you come in and change your whole site.
And and I'll use the Playmore Pool building. The old re-saw mill. Predated, predated the T C O. So that building does not have to adhere to the T C O, if he renovates it, he can still put vinyl siding on it, even though vinyl siding is not allowed in the T C O. And he can add twelve hundred square foot to that building one time without having to adhere to the T C O. If that building had been built after the T C O was implemented, then he'd have to adhere to the T C O guidelines, but that was put in there for the. The older buildings, and one of the best examples of it is the county just purchased and renovated the old pharmacy building. And went back with vinyl siding on that building because it was vinyl siding on it previously and that building predated the T C O.
I think it was actually T one eleven, it was all rock and they put.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna still get the vinyl back on, which vinyl was not allowed in the T C O, neither is when I see one eleven.
Those two, okay. Um, and in the same section, we're down to number six. Building exterior, speaking of stopping, um. So we did change that a little bit, uh, building exteriors visible from U S highway three sixty. Or state highway thirty, shown with the criteria listed in six A or be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. We've got stud code, gavel, brick, stone, decorative block, spit. I can't talk, split face block, neutral colored cementous uh siding or other materials with similar texture. And appearance are considered appropriate to the county character and shall be provided on the main building facades. Nationally recognized indoor trademark colors, logos, pictures or similar type features. May be permitted on the building facades, awnings or other complimentary architectural features with the approval of the director of planning. Vinyl siding, flat or corrugated metal and concrete, concrete block shall not be used for exterior siding material. On any building except that vinyl siding. May be used as trim material, the exterior covering covering material shall extend to the ground except that when a. Solid brick or basement perimeter foundation is used. Exterior covering material need not extend below the top of the foundation. Not less than sixteen percent of the total area of any facade visible from the public right of way, excluding work areas. Shall consist of windows and doors. Mechanical equipment, including ductwork, air compressors. And other fixed operating machinery shall be either screened for view. With either a solid wall, solid fence or landscaping. Or located so that such items are not visible from the public right of way. Utility meters above ground tanks, satellite dishes, antennas, et cetera, shall be similarly treated. Roof mounted mechanical equipment shall be impeccably uh screened from view at grade. By parapet walls or other similar structures that reflect the architecture of the building.
Just noticing what we just said. We took out T one eleven, I think we should put it back, now it's sort of sounds like T one eleven can be used, because we didn't say it can't be used now, so. Probably said that before and I didn't just catch it till just now. Definitely not like that.
Well, I got a question. You're talking about sixteen percent of the view of the front of the building. For example. The new garage that they just built up there. You know, if you put bay doors and windows and doors, excess doors. The front of that building is more than sixteen percent doors and windows.
It is just not less than sixteen percent. They can have more, they just can't have less.
Oh, can't be less than. Okay, I missed that.
Yep.
I was thinking it had to be less than sixteen.
You've got your frontage with glass of doors and that type of thing.
But your point, Mr. Greenland. The two one, the two one eleven is not listed as an acceptable material. It's also not listed as a.
It's not, right, we need to put it back.
We do have, we do have like vinyl siding, the black corrugated metal concrete block. As prohibited, so. Should we add something, because there could be other materials that we also haven't thought of that we would wanna prohibit.
Right, but that I know was, that was in there.
So should we put in there and other material not listed in the acceptable?
I would think that the build planning director seems. Unacceptable, unacceptable. That sounds good. I was just saying, because we, I knew we specifically stated it before, because that's why we got rid of it, and I noticed it. Like you said, it's not one of the acceptable, and still, if you wanna take it legally, somebody could say, well, it's not, doesn't say it's. Acceptable or doesn't say it's prohibited either, so if we put it in there, like I said, along with other materials that seem. Unappropriate by the planning director, that would sort of cover. Get everybody. Would that vary depending on what the public, your director would? It could, I guess, but.
We've got a pretty exhaustive list as it is, so it would be a very rare case, I think. Something that pops up that's not on there, but we can always add or.
Right.
Change if needed.
And we do have the option or be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. So if there's a special type of material that somebody wants to use. And and we're not saying public carry, but brand. You know, and we've had this happen before, right after the ordinance changed, um, for review and approval by the planning commission.
I've got a question. When I see this gal balloon. I keep imagining. Galvanized coated aluminum siding. Which is a metal side. And if you like down under, you say no metal side.
Well, you've got your corrugated. Metal siding and the gavel is a little bit different, it's more decorative. Um, it is a color type of siding, um, they've got all different types, um. There's also different gauges, the the gauges on it are much better. But it's not like your metal colored uh corrugated uh siding that. You had back in the day, a lot of your commercial buildings use these metals now, um. Which I have a PowerPoint a while back on them. So them, some of them look like wood, uh, some of them look like block. Um, just depends on what you get and how much money you spend.
Okay.
Then the next one, we added number twelve and thirteen. Uh, number twelve, fencing along the public right of way is discouraged. If it's used, such fencing shall be landscaped and advised. Visibility from the public right of way. Or the other style, which is harmonious with the rural agricultural and historical character of the county. Chain link fences shall be prohibited. Um, and then thirteen, there's small scale, medium scale or utility scale solar facilities shall be permitted in the transportation quarter overlay district. And then we've added exceptions to the transportation. Border overlay district requirements, exceptions to the development requirements as standards specified in this article. May be granted by the police supervisors, following a recommendation by the planning commission and in accordance with the procedure set out in this section.
Sure, the small, medium and utility scale, are they defined somewhere?
They're in our ordinance. They're all commercial. Ones, they're not like a rip offs and that type of thing.
So when we're talking about, say, that's. It is preferably two or three parcels in the three sixty corridor. One of them or two of them are actually wrong. So would that mean that they would have to go through this process to to put fencing on?
Well, if they're agricultural.
That would be the human property, uh, the lowest property that's wrong.
And they're currently, they're nailing?
Yeah, they're they're being probed.
Yeah.
But.
If they want.
And they're certainly not, um, so they would be exempt.
If they're agricultural and it's agricultural use.
They can do it.
Uh, yeah, they're they're not gonna fall under the commercial. And that's something we may wanna stipulate in here, just so we have it.
We did say that it does not apply to single residential sites, so.
We're getting into our part of agricultural too.
So a single residential can still have chain link?
I think that's a good point. I think I typically, you don't see agriculture will put up chain link fence, but you can't rule it out either.
Are we getting those changes? Anyone? All right, so the next one is childcare centers, and this is something. Um, that has come up. Uh, where we have religious assembly means. A is providing regular organized religious worship and related environmental activities. Except primary or secondary schools and daycare facilities. Um, wanted to add primary, secondary schools and daycare facilities. Shall be permitted with approval of a conditional use permit. The, this gives the churches the opportunity to have daycare facilities. Most of your churches have that anyway. Ideal location for them. And that's a big need.
So they appear to do it by light without having to come get a special exception?
They have to go through a C E P process.
Is. What they have at the kindergarten, is, is that considered daycare or?
Is it daycare school?
It's not, I don't think it's here, Ryan.
No, but it's. It would be considered a type of school, wouldn't it?
They would have to go get a conditional use permit.
Is that the church standby? They've been doing that for a long time, so they're. I think they operate that part time.
Yes, it's not here, I mean, probably. Eight or nine months a year.
But that is the only one other than the commerce park. Where the daycare facility that I know of. In the county. There is a big need for it. Everybody figured that?
There's maybe some grammar, it looks like it says primary, secondary schools. But it means primary or secondary schools.
There's a comment.
Oh, there is?
There's not one after secondary schools, which I would put under, but that's.
Good? Alright, so the next thing is, um, it is that season. Short term business. Uh, two things with this and you'll see it in the matrix. Um, it is to require. Instead of, uh, being permitted by right. Um, and then we added under number four, we've changed that. To require annual renewal application and fee of seventy five dollars is required if the planning department has received. Any valid complaints within a year. The short term rental permit may not be renewed and the applicant must reapply for a conditional use permit. The commissioner revenue will not renew the business license until they receive their annual renewal permit. Most, that's what most localities are doing is for a C E P, it's not permitted by right. Uh, I look at many of them in the area.
I thought when we had this issue, because we came to. Board, that's why we suggested coming back to us, I thought we suggested that after three. Infractions, this is any infraction, now that makes it even. Kind of more strict.
Well, we had what we scratched through it, um, license may be revoked if more than thirty substantiated complaints are received within a year. Um, we just said it may be, um. Not, not definite, but. It hasn't received any, it may not be renewed. Instead of showing on.
What are we covering with the recurring seventy five dollar annual fee?
Uh, just the record of keeping, uh, that they're still operating. And if we have to go into any inspections.
So what was the example you used of thi- this type of business in the area?
It's the Airbnb's and the R B O's.
We had, we had one recently and, and, uh. My district, but. Had some trouble getting off the ground because, um. Some pushback from neighbors.
Well, by this, a little pushback from neighbors will put my business.
Well, that's kind of, yeah.
That's why we put any valid complaints, because that's what we've mentioned too, because a lot of them will call for anything and so the. Planning department has to decide that it's illegal or. Valid complaint, it can't just be, oh, I don't like the way that, what they're wearing today or they're walking, they walked over our property one foot. It has to be pretty valid and pretty extensive error, right, like.
Pretty valid complaints don't necessarily mean. That they will, uh.
It depends on what it is.
It could be free to be full of power and then they won't critical. That's definitely won't be taken.
And, and we do have to validate them.
I think it would read better if we strike any. And just have it read, if the planning department has received a valid complaint within a year.
That sounds, yeah.
That way. That we don't put any kind of number on it. Because it could be one very serious violation or it could be. Valid, it could be five. Valid complaints, but it's like, you know, the trash wasn't picked up quick enough. Or, I, I mean, this is stuff that.
Yeah, it could be, and then it could be something. Massive that you would feel like. Something needs to be done, made it, you know, that's, that's, I would rate it that.
Yeah, like she said, she took out channels, it's still after that, then it says May, so it's still May, because if it's like, if it's really bad, they could after one. If it's a four, minimum ones, and it's like.
It gives some room for them to address the complaint and.
And that's what we brought up with the board about telling so many specific things, we asked for phone number, we asked for this, we asked for that. And so they have to meet all those requirements, and if it's something really major that they're not doing. Then the shared department thinks. Major enough, they may take it away for a year. And they can reapply. And that's another thing I didn't know, but maybe should come up in a different section, but. As we talked about before. It's hard to police these, and we were told at that time that there are many. In business now, these are just the people that are trying to follow the law. And come up with a permit, even though we know two or three other ones are in that same neighborhood. I don't know, maybe that's not the place to put it now, but I don't know if we're going to talk about that, I don't know.
Um, well, we weren't tonight, but we could.
Right, right, I'm just saying, because that's one of the problems on people that do want to follow the stuff and, and go by, but then other people. Aren't doing it and they're having a. They're having the business anyway, but nobody turns them in, nobody knows, they could have a hundred infracts, but since they're not legal to begin with. What are we going to pull? They didn't get a permit to begin with.
I will say, we don't get any complaints, um. We've had one recently, but. For the most part, we, we don't get. So good taken the any often. So the next thing is under eighty six dash four fifty four. Minor residential subdivisions. Um, under D one. Uh, we were scratching, there should be only one access to an adjacent primary or secondary. Highway by new street. And no lot shall have direct access to an existing primary or secondary highway. And we added, there shall be only one access to an adjacent primary highway. There shall be only one access to a secondary highway. Or a shared needed driveway for every two lots. That front a secondary highway. A shared access shall be provided on a fifty foot wide easement extending from the existing public right and from all lots. Within the subdivision, there should be a regular maintenance agreement for each lot in the subdivision.
Yeah, just a quick point, um, we kind of skipped there, you had one other red section, or another section about the commissioner revenue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And, uh. Under D, and the same thing, and it was in that other section.
Right.
The commissioner revenue will not review the business license until they receive their annual renewal permit. Um, and I did talk with her, so that's not.
That's why everybody else in that.
So just, uh, real brief with this, um, minor residential subdivision. Under the old ordinance, we require a driveway for every lot. In the minor subdivision, which they can have up to four lots. When the new ordinance went in. They only allowed them to have one shared road for all four lots. Um. So we came up with this where they have to either have one draw, one lane for all four lots. Or two lots would share a driveway, that's still reducing the number of driveways. Um, cut it in half. But they also have the option to just do them driveway. Except on your primary roads or thirty and three sixty. They don't have that option, they can only have the one entrance.
These three pages that somebody handed out. In my opinion. Especially this third page. That doesn't look like a real subdivision. You know, if it's. Infringing on everybody of the right of way. Instead of a road going in. And having like a turnaround in the back, the, the lots connected. All, all the lot connected to that property. It's like they took. You know. Strip development, put the strikes and tried to put a road to it, instead of putting a road and trying to put the lots to it.
And this was just given as an example at one of our meetings, um, it's not necessarily.
It's not a very good example of trying to build those.
And, and they.
Yeah, they took the same policy and put three different ways to do that policy.
These were just examples that were given out. Um, I've seen it where we've had one driveway. And you have two lots on one side of the road and two lots on the other side of the private road. Um, and it works that way, it gives them the option to have the one or gives them the option to have a shared driveway. It's, um, limiting, it's limiting what people can do with the four lot minor subdivisions. But it gives them the option to do either or.
It's the number entrances.
Kind of cut back the number of access points.
Is it, is it possible to have? Just. Still one, uh, ingress and regress. And take the, uh, the front of the property that is, uh. Running the same maintain road and make that. The, the right of way, each property owner, they still own that property, what is the key in easement? Would that work so far as the road front? Because they would still own that piece of property individually. Say three hundred feet, but that road is going down.
It's just like the third drum, but instead of the road being in the back, you'd put the road straight across the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, it gives just an example. Right, it may get shorter, right, you wouldn't have to go all the way to the back, you can just go here, 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 here.
There's multiple ways.
I think our intent on that was to create some options and some leaving. Being the different configurations before a lot subdivisions.
It seems to me, this, this one in particular, that would do the shortest. Distance. For those, those lots. And, and you still have the ingress and regrade thing. Which would be somewhere around the center or the center of. The, the road frontage along that right of way would still be owned by, by that individual of each one of those lots. Which should satisfy the, the road furniture requirement.
We're talking about one second thing?
No, 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 this is, this isn't. In, in other words, one, one, uh. Any breast regress right there or somewhere around there, and this be. A fifty foot easement across the front of it. Not, it wouldn't have the one that full length of these, these two properties, it probably would. But that would be a very short, a very short road. We can tell that like it's slippery.
Well, yes.
That would satisfy, that would satisfy the concern for. Uh. Traffic entering and exiting. It should satisfy the road frontage still, because these individuals will go on. That property, even though it, it would be a, a right of way.
But if the terrain doesn't allow that.
Where that really comes into effect is if you do a fifty foot right of way across the front of that property. And we now have seventy five foot setbacks, you'd have to be seventy five feet off of that fifty foot right of way, so now you'd have to be. A hundred and twenty five feet off the road.
These minor subdivisions are five acre lots, so I don't see why that would be a problem to begin with.
It's somewhere you can put a grain field and well and start working.
Another thing is, that's where you're going to have your utility easements, is along the front of the, you know, the property. Whether it be above ground or underground.
But your fifty foot easements cannot include. You double fifteen.
A lot of times. Depends on where your property line starts. So, which is hard to tell with this one.
Well, and stuff that definitely cannot be within your fifty foot easement.
On a five acre lot, I would doubt that that would ever be a problem, and it might be a huge argument. But this is just something else to think about, you know. It would be, it would be a very short. Access to any of these lines, and it would still be only one access. Entering and exiting.
And the whole purpose is to try to maintain the rule nature minimally. And I think about one school bus stop, it's been before.
Oh, they don't give any, well, they get stopped every drive in.
It ain't gonna be one driveway.
They say I see, they say, and of course I don't like to deal with it, but. Always going to have somebody that ain't going to help maintain things, so.
Well, even with the two, it's still going to be a, a maintenance agreement between two landowners, correct? Now, if you spread, split the property line and do twenty five foot on one side and twenty five on the other. But, and, and HOAs create more arguments and fights in this county than anything. And. It would split, if you come in this, this, so you would take the fifty feet, this page also that lot, this page two. You'd have twenty five foot on each side of the line. And one, one house would come in and go to the left and then would go to the right. The third page. That Mr. Williams was looking at. If it was built like that now. If house one or four were on fire, the fire truck would have to come in, drive across two and three to get to one and four. And all four houses would share that one right of way.
Yeah, with that, with that drawing, yeah. But if, if the easement was right across the front of the property, you wouldn't have that problem. But would you say?
The easement across the front would be double for pie except. And the one you got here.
Unless they put the house in the back like you got.
I guess what I'm saying is not all situations.
Well, it could be the same argument for, for, for this one. Or this one, when you're talking about the terrain of the property.
Yeah, that's why we had both. Option, second page and fourth page in this ordinance. As the change is to get a little bit more variable.
This all shows just whacking four straight pieces out of any property. Instead of designing the road and the pieces to match your way. This is simple. Just strip development. It's no design or engineering to make it a subdivision, it's just. Let's cut four lines, it's now a subdivision. Building a road with a turnaround, accessing them all, both sides, and building a subdivision. This is just making easy lots. And you just go whack, whack, whack. And over has a place like that they use as example and not to let people develop.
So if there's only one threat of land. On the, on these four parcels, and it's up towards the front of the road that allows the, uh, land to perk for a second grain field. You're, you're not going to put a house in the back over here and then back over here so you can. You have a shorter access. You may have to do something like. Page two. Or you might be in position to do page three. It depends on the lay of the land. And we know that the land engineering does not always per. All across the properties, um.
Yeah, populated areas and stuff like that, I don't know.
You know, what, what we were trying to do with the intent of this was to create options for different situations. Yeah, what, what we were trying to do with the intent of this was to create options for different situations.
So, but the, the literature in this is. One road for two lots, so that would eliminate the last page. Certainly this page, because this is the whole way. But that would only incorporate this. Right?
No.
Does it say either or?
Yes.
It does.
Unless it's on the primary, on the primary, they can only have the one access.
Thirty and three sixty.
But other than that, there's ability one access through a secondary highway. Or a shared, you need driveways for every two lot. So it gives them the option of doing a fifty foot private road. For the four lots. Or it gives them the option of doing a shared driveway for each two lots, so it'd be two driveways. Instead of a one.
What is the minimum road finish?
Four hundred.
So it would be every six linear.
That last one looked like a whole lot of wasted property. That's just an example.
And we cut the entrances down from four to two. I mean, so we cut them in half fifty percent.
It's only to be done with. How you get there and be flexible. Anything to make sense. But everyone's gonna be able to do bill the same as that kind of year.
Yeah, you know, when, when we approved the. I thought it was like a, you know, a compromise because originally we were talking about a ten, ten acre or. A minor subdivision. And it was, you know, we all. And, and the board said that we wanted to get this remaining five acres. And, and I thought that that's where the, the single entrance and exit came in the blood. And that's certainly what we approved. Is it any way to put something in there that would say? I guess the board and the planning commission would have to approve anything other than. Say something wrong to be surprised, be like Matt said, the, the terrain. I mean, that's just me. But I still think that, that wrote. It satisfies just about everything unless it was a fiscal problem with, with the lot, the lots is built.
For everyone to believe that it was any administrator.
Well, well, you know, y'all could go through the planning commission and go with the board.
Is it, um, you want it done by way of a public hearing or just?
Well, I don't, I don't know. Ideally, I think that we should do everything we could for, for one entrance and one acre. And, and some of them won't. Like you said, be able to do that. But if there's any way that we can, we can work it to make it work, um, you know, that was the original goal.
So every minor subdivision, you're gonna create a homeowners association.
Why would that be a homeowners association? Why would it not be just, just a road maintenance period? Why would it be a homeowners association? Well, if it's a minor subdivision, then four lot, we're still looking at four lots, so. Minor subdivisions as they exist right now, it's not a homeowners association, is it?
If they have a shared road, it is.
Well, this is gonna be a shared road with, with this one right here. Only it'll need two, so will that be a homeowners association?
It doesn't have to be because as soon as you come in off the road, that road can split, splits the property line, so. You could drive in on your twenty five feet, your neighbor could drive in on their twenty five feet.
They would still, and then those, and then the ordinance have a shared maintenance agreement, even for the drive.
So, would it be a homeowners association, would it be required?
Um, they. It could just be the, our road maintenance agreement is attached to those.
We were just giving new options. They said they don't have to do one or the other, except like shares hit on thirty and three sixty, you have to have just one. There's no exception. These are only on secondaries, like. We were allowing the extra entrance so that they didn't have to have all four come out and do that finagling thing. They, you could have, we're not getting rid of the four. But you're allowing two or one. If we just kept it at one, then you have to do something. Like with a major road and go in the front or the back, like I said, we're not telling them to put the road in the front or the back, that's just a picture. This isn't in the ordinance. That was just showing how it'd be, like Stewart said, it can be the split from the front, but still. You're gonna have to have some big agreement. Because the last two houses are gonna have to go through these two houses to get to their.
Would be a road maintenance period. Which you're gonna have with, with each one of these too.
Mine, but it's harder to do. This one, you're going through these two peas, people's property. The other two, you're sort of sharing it. I know I'd have a road agreement and nobody keeps up with it. I have to take care of all of it for all five houses. So it doesn't matter if you have a road agreement, maintenance or not. They're not gonna do it, just like the same thing we talked about before, there's no policing, you can't enforce it. You can, if you say you're gonna have it, you can say you're gonna have it, but nobody does.
Well, I'm not trying to be. When one, when two people are sharing. It's gonna be a, a road maintenance.
Yeah.
And you can, you can add one alone that does not want to do anything. And, and it's still the same problem.
Right.
We want a shared driveway that does not have to be a road and a disagreement.
If you have fifty foot and the property line is in the middle of them. You can turn in on your driveway and go to the left and I can turn my driveway, we, we don't share anything. So the mouth of that driveway is in the V dot right of way.
Okay, so, so let's say this one right here. I'm sure it's fifty foot easement right here. And then that part from here to here. And then this piece right here, is it still fifty feet? Was it solely on this lot? I think it's what you're saying, it's solely on each lot, right, both of them. Not the one in there, so, like this one right here, no, it's a whole idea, that's twenty five feet. Or off of each lot, I was saying, correct?
Yeah, whatever they put behind it, they can put a ten foot one if they want to. However, they get to their house from where it splits, it's up to them.
So you're still gonna, you're still gonna end up with four houses. Four houses you could see from the road, they each have to have three hundred foot of road frontage. If you have one entrance, you're just gonna go in and drive across your two neighbors to get to the outside lots and you create. In that case, you do have to have a road maintenance agreement because you're totally crossing somebody else. To get, get hurt outside lot.
Yeah, I understand that, but I still don't see that across the front, you, you, you have your problem, right? But I think that would answer a lot of problems. I think that it should always be tried to uh have one entrance and exit. And if something happens and, and the property doesn't comply with what you need to do. You can come back and.
Like I said, the planning commission just decided we were just given another option than having mandatory one entrance for four lot subdivisions. But given the extra option to have an extra entrance, that was it. You can do it any way you want, you can still do one if you want. But it's like you said, they can do two, if, if for some reason the topography shows that they need to. They don't have to, it's just another option. That's all we're adding, an extra option to make it a little easier for some people. To create entrance.
Nature is gonna go, they need to go to the easiest solution. Not necessarily one that might be a little bit difficult.
Right, for a contractor, yeah, like I said, they're not gonna wanna build all that right away and go to the back and like Stewart said, all the way to the back, all that road and round and gravel and stuff.
Stewart's option allows you. One entrance unless. With the criteria then, it has to come back for. Um, and any.
Yeah, but that makes it harder. We're trying to make it easier for people to do stuff, not harder, that's the whole thing. And this is an option, it doesn't have to be, it's not mandatory.
And I'm, I'm, it, it's actually cheaper to have one entrance than it is to build two. Cause you have to post a eleven hundred dollar surety bond to V dot. You have to put in thirty feet of pipe.
He said, yeah, it's wide then.
Although the gravel on each one, that would actually be. From builders, developer standpoint, cheaper to build one. Than it would do to build two. My, my argument is, we, we've got a lot of things going on in the county right now with HOAs. Four wheeler ride and when it's a, when it's a shared driveway or whatever, you have the right to ride your four wheeler, do whatever it is you want on that road. And we're having those issues now.
With no answer.
Right.
Teaching for two parties to resolve the difference.
Than for.
And they're really not sharing. They're just coming in on the V dot entrance and going both ways.
Are we making this more complicated than it should be? Sounds like, like you're just adding an option, it sounds like it's not real conflict. Unless they're making it harder than it has to be.
That's just a way out for you. And I'm on the wrong person.
When we're going to go ahead and tell them, they're gonna need to go with this language. Maybe. You could do up two options like you did before for us and that reflects. More of a long lines of what Stewart's saying. With. Providing language that. That gives preferential. Attention to the single entrance. But with the way. For, to be approved for significant difference. Uh, and then as another option of what you got. Agree field plan connection.
So where they could go to the planning commission and the board for approval? Or?
Well, I definitely go to them. If we go then. Maybe it could be voted in. Often there often there.
Okay, just put both options out there.
Yeah. Yeah, at this point, it's gonna be in the board's hands to vote on, so.
Again, would this require a public hearing? Or would it?
Just they would be administrative.
Is that right, did we hear that one?
Preferably the one.
Yeah.
We will make the changes. So if we all get into the agreement tonight, it would be October. We, we can't do it in September. And it's in how we're entered down in my feelings. I think we have two changes.
Well, one page.
Forty three.
Forty three.
Forty three is our first one.
Yeah, that is the three years of December that we talked about earlier. With the primary, secondary and daycare facilities. And then the other one is under um townhouse development. Uh, I have it on page fifty one. So it's just for kind of what I am about it. Townhouse development being one or more single family dwellings, including townhouses. With accessory parking, open space and recreational and residential facilities. And we've just added, this includes carriage homes and condominium structures. That are single family homes that share walls with neighboring units. Uh, we really didn't have anything in the ordinance that um. Address the carriage homes and the condominium structures, so our county attorney felt like we needed to put something in there. So then under the news neighbors. It was eighty six thousand one forty.
Thirty is done.
Oh.
It is all or no, yeah, thirty four.
With Airbnb, I'm the fourth time this month candles. Uh. We uh changed it from permitted by rights to a C B C. Yeah.
Right, I was just trying to.
Um, so. Then on the last part of the zoning, we had the conceptual plan and proposed changes for checklist. Fifty, on page fifty three. And uh, we have the community service committee for the planning of such any plans. That need be attached checklist. Regaining reflected your plan of site plan that would ship current site, acres, wetlands. And sign and propose zoning and basic not fees along with their. And so on the checklist, it's under. Uh. My, my, this is under eighty six thousand four oh forty. And this is also one that we uh gave them additional page, but it's not in your packet.
For the town, anything added in the law or?
Most of the, they're the same. Some of it has been the little bit.
Just grammar stuff again, I mean, I don't know what kind of program we use, but. I don't know why it's cutting words off, it's splitting up things, it's putting stuff on an extra line. Can we fix any of that? I mean, for example, number five. It says unconditional per. Offer is on the next line and the statement's on the third line, why can't we? Why doesn't it put proffer statement all on the second line? It's like it's chopping it all up in the same thing. Under. Number thirty two, employees and general eye. Information at a personal business. On, it's, I don't know why it's. Cutting it and not, you know, truncating it like it's supposed to, would it be better on the formal copy or is this? I mean, it usually does that. Yeah, it's like. Normally, how we, how we prepare, what do we word or excel or?
It was a word. I can see what's going on with that. Um. I can kind of briefly go through what the current ordinance says if you like. Or.
The sender goes to where. That's all right.
Yep.
You don't have a quick, like highlight on your copy that would show them.
Uh, gentlemen, some changes around a little bit, um, but we did include a lot. Uh, yeah, like I'm changing around a little bit, um, but we did include a lot of the same material. Uh, but there was, uh, there was a few things that really were not needed on this.
I think the main thing was we asked for a site plan, which was too expensive and that's the main thing. Now it's seven conceptual conceptual plan copies so that they can. Give us an idea without spending all the money since they haven't even really decided what they're gonna do. And then they'll put later in the process of giving us a formal site.
Well, this is gonna give us a lot of the information that we need to make a decision. Uh, it's gonna give you what, what they're proposing, uh, what is out there on the site. What's around there, uh, their proposed, their building lines, their setbacks, any restriction, uh. And anything that we would need with the sample plan. Oh, what's sort of missing is some of the stormwater and Indiana. But it still requires that you show wetland and that type of thing, well, you know.
I think one of the issues we had because they brought, they came to both boards and the problem was before that it had gotten updated on the website. So then we didn't have the, I mean. We shouldn't have held them responsible. Some people felt that we should have held them responsible for them to have the. Burden of using our most current form. We can't even get our own forms on our own websites. So that was the major issue. But now that that's changed. And we do have it on the website and we do have the checklist. And now, like I said, the last one we got, you went down line by line and gave us everything and said that it needed met all of this. They will climb us. So that's a lot better. So I think that was the main issue.
In the future, it makes it easier for everybody, myself included.
So, so this is the checklist for a conditional use permit. This is not the checklist for rezoning.
No, for the rezoning, uh, like I said. Uh, we would require a site plan that would fit the current site acreage, wetland, the current type of thing, a basic properties along with everything.
But that we're not changing on this particular update.
So we can, I'll certainly do the existing and the proposed and get that to you later next. All right, and uh, just a brief discussion on the fifty schedule. We have a lot of changes. This should be uh. With this particular one, um, conditional use permit for commercial. We had it as thirty five hundred dollars plus fifty dollars an acre. Uh, just take that fifty dollars for acre and or thirty five hundreds. Uh, with this, there were new categories that we're not even addressing here. One was a P U D preliminary, P U D uh final flat, the cluster division preliminary, the cluster division uh final. Uh, we've had them all at twenty five hundred except for the final at five hundred. Which followed our major uh preliminary and our major final flat. So those are just uh. New divisions under that uh category that were not covered. Uh, another uh couple of changes. For single lot division, if it's five hundred plus twenty five an acre, uh, we made it at three hundred. The minor was five hundred plus twenty five an acre. We made it at three hundred. And then we also added um. A exempt subdivision and farms that, uh, farm said subdivision at three hundred. So we broke it down a little bit where the exempt fell under the five hundred plus twenty five an acre. Uh, we brought it to a division down to three, uh, three hundred and the farm said at three hundred.
The seven lot minor strategy. For acre and move ten to five hundred.
We can do that. I've looked at all, all the localities around us and tried to keep it in kind of in line with what other localities are doing.
I thought we'd also talk about adding something because it was brought up when that. Air Band B came on that we were gonna add a fee for the. Rental, something.
These are just. We're gonna work on that for the end of the year.
Okay, I thought maybe we were gonna do it this way.
You should be again, we're early to put those cameras in here.
No, I didn't. Not good.
So, since we, since we brought up the short term rentals again, there, there were, I wanted to get back to, to the conditional use permit as it was um. When we finally did approve that one on Fox's track, there were a couple of things in there that I thought made a lot of sense to have been put into the ordinance and I wanted to get um. Get down to some of the, one, one of the kind of the key ones was no, like the primary renter shall be at least twenty five. It's, it's still in there that it would be eighteen. And that was a big sticking point. Um, with both us and with the um, the neighbors was that, you know, renting to eighteen year olds. You know, you can ask a lot of renters and next that that goes. Uh, generally not good, so. Well, right. And so I was thinking that that make, makes sense to you rather than, you know, shoehorning into the CUP every time they come through. Let's just put it in the ordinance that it's. Gonna be twenty five is gonna be the minimum age. That was kind of the big one that I saw that we didn't change, that I was surprised we hadn't changed in there when I was looking at this compared to what we've got um. To what we've got in there. So that would be the, the one addition to that section that I would. Propose is writing under the ordinance.
In the number handling. It wasn't on there.
Are you talking about the um? So it's uh, page nineteen, we would have to put it somewhere on there. Under eighty six two ten.
But we did change that.
Now, if you get down, the, the part that I'm talking about changing is um.
The bed and breakfast from page nineteen?
Yeah.
Oh, I showed them.
Yeah, the principal guest of a short term business rental should be at least eighteen years of age. We would change that to twenty five. And it was in the CUP that we approved, but it's not, it's not in the ordinance.
Board told the planning commission to read, look at it. So yeah, let's go ahead and go back and. Everybody okay to go back to, you got it up right page thirteen and change it to twenty five.
You said on page thirteen?
Nineteen.
Now there's two different pages.
Right, it's like this, it's the top line. Well, then I'm working on that.
It's under section eighty six dash two.
You go to page nineteen and then look across the top of page twenty.
Oh, that's nineteen down there. You got two sets of numbers on the. That's what I want to know which numbers that we weren't, you know.
Right.
So uh.
Okay.
Line four on page twenty.
Is that the only thing you can?
That's, you know, there were other things that we had in there about screening and stuff like that, but that's probably stuff that you can handle in the CUP process. But I think. It's, if we're gonna tell everybody that applies that the principal guest needs to be twenty five, then we might as well tell them upfront rather than once they begin to see you.
Is there anything else under that?
I was looking at the rest of it and the rest of it probably could, just depending on the nature of the property and how it's being rented. Um, you know, we, we put a lot of conditions for screening and. Stuff like that and some of the stuff that's already in the ordinance, but some of that stuff applied to just the unique nature of that property. Um. But that was the one that jumped out at me that was remaining unchanged in the ordinance. So I thought we needed to address.
So just quickly going back to the fees, um, other than leaving the single or the minor five hundred, taking the front five off. There are no other changes, everything else is good. All the changes that we found there, I don't think anything else. Anyone else want to go and discuss or?
The single and minor is not gonna have the three hundred, it's gonna stay with five, you said.
So that would be.
Yeah, we're just talking about that. Think the twenty five.
The uh, yeah, the single lot and the minor would be five hundred instead of three. What would be the three would be the exempt subdivision, which are your twenty five acre parcels. And uh, farmstead subdivision.
You said you put in the three hundred for the single and the minors because that kept us in line with other counties.
I went around and looked at some of our um adjacent uh neighbors here and. Tried to keep them in line uh as best I could with somebody other localities.
I guess the question is, do we wanna stay in line or do we wanna go from three hundred to five hundred?
Around the world.
Sounds like you don't.
Well, look, I, it, it. How, this is my thing with all of these fees. How are we justifying? Are we covering costs? Are we throwing an arbitrary number out there? Like, you know, the goal with this fee should be to cover our real administrative costs. With the applications, the hearings. Um, you know, any per diem for B Z A or anything like that. Those fees should be covering it. And that's how the fee should be justified. So what was the methodology that landed us there?
Our single on minors or boundary line or lot line vacation or boundary surveys. Family divisions exempted farmstead. They don't take long to, to review. Um, and then of course, once we do a review, they most of their time go to the health department and then they go to V dot. When you get up to your, the top uh category, the majors and the P U Ds and the clusters. They take a lot of time to review. It's a lot more complex.
Plus anytime there's an advertising requirement, stuff like that, we gotta cover all those costs.
Oh, except that this is three hundred dollars covered. Like it's pretty minimal. We wanna do a compromise with everybody, change it to four hundred. That they, that way it's a little more, not quite five hundred.
Still an arbitrary number.
Well, yeah.
We should be able to sit down and say, this is what it costs in staff administrative time, advertising, et cetera, and say, this is, this fee will cover that.
If all other counties are charging three hundred, why are we charging more? That's what she said. She came up with it from all.
Well, she says there could be a very good reason we're charging more. That's, that's.
She just said it wasn't. It was very minimal time.
On, on some of those, but on others it takes more time. So we've got it. Again, my point is. Why don't we justify what we're charging? Let's get a true account of what it costs us to do this thing and let's set a fee that covers those costs. Not more, not less. That way, what if it ends up being a hundred and fifty?
Then it's a hundred and fifty, so bad. I mean, that, that.
How would you address that, Sharon?
If we're gonna do that, we should do that to all of them, because all of them arbitrary numbers.
I mean, you know, once we get it. Once it comes in, Barbara will take it in, she logs in everything. Um, I think they'll look at it to make sure it meets the criteria. If it meets all the criteria, then. She will do a memo, she'll send it to the health department. It's gotta have health department favorable work. Um, it'll go to V dot. Um, when we get it back from them, um. Then we can, we'll sign off on it. We've got it, everything's good. We've already reviewed it. We'll sign it off. Um, they have to take it and get it recorded and bring it back. And we keep a copy. Betty gets a copy for um G I S and of course the commissioner revenue gets a copy. So for these uh, single and minor and family, that's pretty much. The, the time spent on doing those. The others take a lot of time, so not quite as easy.
So, has it been five hundred off, up till now?
Um, I can't remember what it was before. I don't think it was, or if it was five hundred, we didn't have the twenty five per acre.
So where this, where this came into effect is Mr. Henderson did a single lot subdivision on a hundred acres down here on thirty. And he was charged the fee plus twenty five dollars an acre and it ended up being twenty five hundred dollars.
He wound up doing two exempt subdivisions. Um. And I don't remember the exact acres on top of mine I had here, but they were both over twenty five acres. And wind up being um, one bit for two lots.
So I can understand the twenty five dollar acre deal. But dropping to five hundred is looking like we want to promote minor subdivisions or single lot subdivisions. And I didn't think that's what the county was looking for.
No, that wasn't. We were just trying to keep. Most of them three hundred with the exception of the boundary line, lot line vacation. We're trying to creation of lots, so just.
It all comes down to me. What is it actually, like Travis said, what does it actually cost us?
That's what we just decided.
Once they put them in, they cost the taxpayers from that day on.
This is just an approximate, two, two and a half. Well, it would be myself and Barbara.
Send that out.
Yeah, put the single and the minors and.
Thanks, we can email that.
I can do that. I was wanting to take a question, so we can go ahead and keep it. People that take the load as well. You know, goes that direction.
Okay.
Yep.
Of these incomes complimentary?
Yeah. Nice, it's like jail.
These are changes over to all.
We have to clean these on there.
I've gotten a lot of funny answers.
That it? All right. And I'm gonna do it a little bit different. I know to get it on here, there's any board supervisor have any request versus going to. I'm good.
At the end of our regular meeting, but.
You wanna add two hours on there?
Do you have anything else?
All right, I will entertain and much.
We were there, sir.
Plan commission as well.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Barnes?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Hagen?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, you took a big.